I call to order the Town Hall Old Tabor Zoning Commission Regular and Hybrid Meeting of Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall, First Wall Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Tabor. Seated tonight, that's me, Bob Prinman, Chairman, Mark Caldarella, Vice Chair, Gary Lewis, Secretary, regular Commission members, Mike Delmonico and Anne Marie Thorson, one, two, three, four, and five, that's five. We also have present our alternate, John Henry, we have absentee alternate Justin Teraville and Sandy DeSenzo. And it's reported that Sandy may well be resigning, but that's not yet official. So we may have a vacancy. Here we also have our clerk, Joanne Galley. We expect our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa, to be here momentarily. And we have two, four, or five people in the room and two online. First on the agenda is regular business minutes of our previous meeting, that being Monday, April 17th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
It looks okay to me.
If you can.
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the meetings of Monday, April 17th as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mark Delmonico, second, Jerry Lewis's motion to approve the April 17th meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as presented? Think of by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good job. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Have we any correspondence other than that patient?
Not that I know of.
No. Okay. Public hearings. Cantina Beach, application for special exception for restaurant use, 108 indoor seats, 22 outdoor seats at 1596 Boston Post Road, accessory map 26, lot 24 in the B Ford District and Pedestrian Note. Applicant Santiago Castro, Agent Joe Renz, P E. This opened the public hearing. Mr. Renz.
Good evening, everyone. A little west of the easel plans these things. You've done most of these online and come up with a past few years.
Yeah.
In a row, and I actually like to present online just because I think we can see better and go better and point around and the whole audience gets to see also what we're doing. We're back to in person, part of the next applicant, and I don't think we want to be here in person. Bring the whole dog. So good evening again to everyone as well. For the record, Joe Renz, professional engineer, representing the applicants. With us tonight is Santiago and Lewis. So as you know, this site here, coming around the west end of town, this is the old Samurai Restaurant. A long, long time ago, looking back through the file, used to be a bookstore and a dealership. Back in the 60s, believe it or not. But since the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, for as long as I can remember, anyway, looking through the file, it's been various types of restaurants ever since. Has a parking lot and a subject system to handle, you know, turn capacity of a restaurant. So obviously, this is continuing that use provided the statement of use for you. Just run through the existing conditions of the site really quickly and then get into the. So on the west side of the site here, you can see the outline of the existing restaurant. No additions, no vertical expansion, anything staying as it is. Renovating the outside and the inside. We provide before and after photos to you as well, which are going to do a better job than the architectural plans. Can see existing building, but it's just dressing up the outside. And also you can see from the photos really an improvement on the interior of the restaurant itself. So the site is in the B Ford Zone, special exception restaurants, you see, you know, a long standing use of the restaurant since it's converting to a type of restaurants and we're in the pedestrian, nobody requires a special exception. So with that, we have all the proposed landscaping and sidewalk and lighting, all the details that you have part of your package, which was also supplemented after the original submitted based on some comments that we got back from SAC. So along with the building on the site, there is a paved driveway and some parking around the property that essentially extended pretty close to the property line on the west border and south border. And that was at Austin Street Route 1. And then on the east side, there is a gravel parking lot that gravel surface is proposed to remain. We're not expanding the pavement at all. We're keeping that purpose there, maybe re-dressing the stone, but keeping it previous material. And we're reorganizing that parking lots and reducing the overall footprint. The deal of both vehicles, we got essentially that whole square block in there is gravel and it's not really delineated parking spots. It's kind of a wide open parking lot. There's an odd little wall in the center with a little light. And that's proposed to come out. There are a few parking spaces in the center, drive-through spaces. But then all the other ones are angled so we have a one-way circulation around through there with angled spaces and delineated parking spaces. We have, of course, the wheel tops on the building, you know, the parking. Since it's on a loose surface, we can't strike that area, but we have the parking. And then in the four corners, we're removing some of the existing gravel parking lot just for organization and getting some island mixed into that big square area of gravel. And you can see we're adding some trees in those areas through the landscape items. Right in the center of the parking lot where there's the only sight lights, a double-headed sight light, dark sky components light. It's right in the center, putting those lights throughout that parking lot. And of course, we're proposing an island that needs a substitution in that location as well. While we're on the landscaping subject, over when they were doing improvements, site improvements, there was some vegetation that was removed, some trees that were cleared and brushed out, that were removed, a lot of overgrown items. The residents on Denmore Lane and Orchard Lane were asking questions about what's going to go back into its place and so forth. So here we have more than what's required. We have street trees, as you can see, all along the Route 1 frontage, along the Orchard Lane frontage and along the Denmore Lane frontage. Now, some of this vegetation on the town roads is in the town right away. Press and Carl, the town wants that street landscaping and they are okay with maintaining anything that's in the town right of way once it's installed. As far as along the north edge, that's obviously the DOT Highway, Route 1. I talked to one of us recently and she was in conversation with the DOT person about the maintenance of that. And as long as those are installed for DOT requirements, that landscaping and trees, that the town will be maintaining those trees as well. Since this is in the pedestrian note and it's on Route 1, we have a sidewalk across the entire frontage. There is no sidewalk there now on the side of the street. So we have the brick soldier core sidewalk all the way from close to Orchard Lane at the extension of the property line, all the way to the extension of the property line at Denmore Lane. Crossed in place. When we went to, just to finish up with landscaping, when we went to our picture review board, they asked that we supplement, they like the landscaping that we have, but they asked that we supplement in between, like in between the street trees and in between the front of the restaurant. We have some five, some hydrangea shrubs and a couple flowering trees on the ground. And the interest is in between the plants, some annuals and perennials mixed in, which this revised plan, that's revision number one, where you should have revised it some April 23rd. That includes the architecture review board comments related to landscaping. For signs, there are no building sign being proposed. The only sign is the existing pre-standing sign out in the front of the restaurant. We provided a photo of that and a rendering of what the post sign will look like. The ARB had some comments on that too. They actually wanted the logos to be a little bit bigger. And they, I think there was a web address or something for the restaurant that they, they asked that that be removed and the shift around so that the logo on the top part of the sign could be even bigger. So we provided a new rendering of that sign as well, based on ARB comments. And that is just replacing, the existing sign structure is there and that's just replacing the empty sign. On both sides, what we're showing. The, for the lighting, again, I had already mentioned the one double-headed dark sky compliant pictures in there in the center of the eastern parking area. And then there are building mounted lights too at the doorways. There are certain style, we provided specifications, labeled those. And then also mounted around the perimeter of the building are other building mounted dark sky compliant lights that are on there and the specifications are included in your package as well. For the architectural plans, the applicant has provided essentially drawings of the existing. But again, as I said earlier, it leaves the photos of before and after tell the story better than their architectural plans do. One thing I forgot to mention about the lighting is there is a portmoneys plant that was provided. And you can see around the property lines that that goes to zero. That includes the building mounted lighting as well and that goes to zero at the property. Along the south side, there is some approachment from the neighbor driveway in a building. But that, we don't plan to force improvement of that or anything that would stay as is. The applicant is the less see of the property and they're not the owner of the property, just for informational purposes. As far as the statement of use is concerned, we provided copious doubt. We revised it, it turned some staff comments and what they should have is dated March 28th rather than March 15th. And I'll just go through some highlighted points of that for you and if you have any questions. So again, March 28th, 2023, list the applicant, his name, address, zoning district area of the property is just under an Eager. The purpose, which we already went through, hours of operation, all the way down through the initial statement of use, that some possible salsa dance classes and, you know, possible banquet, all of that stuff has been taken out of the statement of use. And it's just strictly the hours. There is some inside music proposed and everything here, I believe Thursday, Friday, and Saturday has music. Thursday has an acoustic salsa music. Friday has a guitar or mariachi live acoustic. And then Saturday is live DJ amplified there from 9:00 to 1:30 AM. And of course, inside home. And then the hours on Sunday are 11:00 to 4:00. Parking is one thing that we haven't discussed yet. There was, if you look through the files, it's a very thick file from all the different restaurants that were there. And it had seating all over the place from 90 to 170 and everywhere in between. So when I first reviewed this with Chris, Chris Costa had, and I had the idea of seeing what we can get for parking and then backing it back into the seating. That, which was an excellent suggestion and that's what we did. So we reorganized the parking. We got 36 total parking spaces, which relates to one tree per parking space, relates to 108 seats. With the 36 parking spaces, we get an additional 12 outside. And then the applicant's requesting an additional 10 because they're in a pedestrian. And so it would be 108 inside and then 22 outside, which are shown on there. And the parking is sufficient based on the regulations for that. And that's all listed here between parking and seating. Screening of the rooftop mechanicals, there are some existing rooftop mechanicals. And although they're not increasing the size or changing those, it was suggested that there would be some screening of that. So in the updated package, there is a photo of lattice, white lattice screening. And that would be applied in the roof areas to block the rooftop mechanicals from the ground. And then also on the east side, there is an existing transformer on that side in the same type of material would be used to screen that existing transformer on that side as well. Sign, lighting, and the landscaping we already went through. As far as the waste, there is an existing dumpster pad back here, concrete dumpster pad. The applicant has since reconstructed the fence along the back line, but at the same time built a solid wood fence over that concrete pad for the enclosure with wood gates. And we provided a photo of that as well for you in your package. That's existing condition, they've already made that. So with that, if you have any questions for me or for the applicant, I'll be my best.
I just wanted to make sure that Thursday is inside music as well. It doesn't say, but I'm sure that it is.
All music is inside, only if you look up under purpose, Gary, the last statement, the music entertainment, and it says inside only, the last sentence of the purpose.
Yeah. I'll try to look at that front page.
But Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, only Friday and Saturday.
Says inside only.
Say it again, inside only.
So yeah, no problem. It's inside only, there's no plan for any of them.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
And the music that's playing inside, like the soundproofing or something, but it's not, means Jasonville residential area, so.
Yeah, they, it's, you know, inside the existing building. I'm not sure if there's any additional soundproofing done or not, but whatever, you know, whatever the noise orders.
On the roof and the lattice, I think he indicated that would hide it from the ground. Zenkudo all four sides.
Only where the rooftop mechanicals are. I don't recall from the photos, you can see that in the ground.
I couldn't see from any of the pictures if there was anything in the back. I was just concerned.
Yeah, so the exterior front from Route 1, you can't do that, man. So you can't really see anything from right behind the front side. I think it's more from the sides. Yeah, the side was up again. West side, the west side, you can see the rooftop mechanicals. The roof comes up higher in the front.
Right.
So it would be the west and the east side.
Right. I was concerned for a buddy of property owners at the back of the building and it wouldn't be visible from.
Yeah, the rear, again, there's no change or anything. It's been like after a long time now, there's no change back there. If they're doing both eastern websites, do you mind running that along the backside?
Yeah, I mean, it can be, if it's there, visible. If it isn't.
From a distance, yeah, it probably is. You can see from these photos that there are some mechanicals close to the rear. And then other ones are close to the front.
If we could do that.
Bet that time they've already agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the, that's the only difference in the statement of use between March 15th and March 28th. That's the screening?
Uh, no, there were, as I mentioned earlier, the banquets and the dance classes were removed from the statement of use.
Right. Okay. Because I see beyond the hours of operation that it's a Saturday, that lunch and dinner are served from 11:00 AM to 1:30 AM. And so there's, there's, there's no time period where admission is restricted to adults. It's always open to the general public, teenagers, 20-year-olds.
Yes, correct. Always open to the general public.
Yeah.
It's not adults only. So if you want a taco at 12:00 in the morning, you can go get it.
Yeah.
On the site plan with the revision of April 21st.
Okay.
On the earlier one, but this is the one we're working from at the top. The landscaping data table says shopping center B2, I think it's supposed to be B4 district. The data in there corresponds to the B4 district and there's 25% minimum landscaping, but that's a type, let's call it a type.
Yeah, correct on the zoning data, it may be a lot closer to the.
And then. If you go to the parking regulations in section 52, 36 seats are, 36 parking spaces will suffice for the regulation requirement to sustain 108 seats indoors and 22 outdoors. And then our agenda item in our agenda for this evening, it says it's for the special exception for restaurant use, 108 indoor seats, 22 outdoor seats. And yet consistently in the application material, it talks in inside the footprint of the building, it says 130-seat restaurant. And then in parentheses, it's 108 indoor seats and 22 outdoor seats. The breakdown is correct, but the characterization of it as 130-seat restaurant is not correct. It's a 108-seat restaurant with outdoor seating plus a request for additional outdoor seating. And so let's be clear that it's a 108-seat.
No, no problem. That's completely what it's intended to be and that's what's in the statement of use very clearly, I believe, in there.
Let's see.
Yeah, it said, right, I'm working, parking last paragraph of the statement of use, it says per rose parking comments, 108 indoor seats and 12 outdoor seats and then.
Yeah. And. In the lighting notes on the plan, I got surprised that the lighting will not exceed 20, 14 feet tall from grade. And yet I didn't see any dimension. I just wanted to reinforce that the note for the lighting notes on the lower right of the site plan. Light poles and fixtures shall be 14 feet from finished grade. Concrete light pole bases flushed with the brown surface painted a dark color.
We have that. Thought in the lighting specifications somewhere, but yes, it is on the plan to be 14-foot maximum.
All right. I looked, I didn't see. I saw a minimum of five feet from the ground on a one pole, but I didn't see a maximum to the top of the light that's here. So it's noted on the plan. Okay. I have a question about the orientation of the light. On the site plan, it appears to me that the orientation of the lights, the two light sources on one pole and the two light sources as rectangles around on either side of the swing. It appear to need to be perpendicular to the building. But on the photometric plan, the light sources in green squares appear to be aligned differently. Which, which one? And there's light spillage on the Boston Post Road and the photometric. He tells us that the way the light fixtures on the pole are oriented. So which one is it?
So the April 21st plan appears to have the double head and express orientation, which is the same on the photometric plan. I don't see the difference. That, that's original, that wasn't revised, but the site plan.
So there's a revised photometric?
No, no, that's the original, the only photometric, the site plan they have that supports one-on-one. They have a revision one on the side.
Revision.
Yeah.
So it looks to me that it's oriented in the same.
Are you talking about this, this page?
Uh, yes, if that's, so on the right side over here.
Yeah.
That should say, you can point and place revisions. Otherwise.
Oh, no. Okay.
You can tell easily because the later one, the updated one, has a sidewalk, a walkway from the sidewalk to the front of the building.
Okay, I was wondering.
That's easy spot to interrupt there. Earlier one did not.
So on that, the orientation is west. Where on each side on the left side?
And local knowledge reveals that there are, that there are fence and door fences, that different materials along Denmore Lane. Are they on this property or not showing? Because they're not on this property.
Let's see, along Denmore.
Yeah, there's a tail lift fence for part of it, I think, and a leftover spade fence.
On the right side, there's still a fence on the right-hand side.
It's not like that. It's like, no, it's like, I believe part of the fence, but what is there before? Did he move it? Is there?
Okay. But the majority of the fences are removed.
Yeah. Okay.
But that was in one of the existing.
I have a question on the signs, whatever the traffic flow on the Boston Post Road. The sign that is western, on western side of the, of the, of the landscape area that has the walkway from the sidewalk to the door, there's a sign. And the arrow to that sign says, do not enter. And yet it would seem that the parking diagonal spaces are aligned in order for that to be an entrance.
So if you look closely at the sign, you'll see the post on the Route 1 side and on the face of the sign on the inside. So that sign is facing in.
Inside.
It's a, it's a double-facing sign.
It's just a single-facing sign.
And which, yeah. Located in the.
See, it says facing into.
Located in the right of way.
Yes, but it's on a breakaway post, you're okay with that. But it says facing into site, so the sign is facing south, facing into the site.
Okay. Is there any sign indicating that that's the entrance and that the one, that the other, the other one is two-way traffic, I guess?
Yes.
Letting go, yeah, all right, okay, I see. Being that you can, you have your choice of drive curbsides to enter. That sign is to reinforce that traffic is not supposed to exit.
Right. Zone one exit and then put a stop car and a stop sign.
Okay. All right. And. Then, I'm going to turn with the listing conditions then, yeah. All right.
Yeah, so in my opinion, the building is left for a long time. With this landscaping and this configuration of the parking.
Right. So I think I saw somewhere in the application materials, something about a cam. This, this, our agenda doesn't say it's in the cam.
There's no cams required.
Yeah, they're.
Not this one. That's the one.
Then we have referrals from anybody on this one. But we have.
So at this point, we have not heard that from anyone except for the architecture review board. So I don't believe we're going to hear from anybody at this point. That was from March 21st, referrals were sent.
All right. All right. The lighting that's on the building is dark cycle blind?
Yes, all the specifications.
The bottom version of wall packs, I saw the lighting detail, yeah.
They're two different sites.
The selected one is indicated in orange, right?
Yeah, that's the one over the doors and then this is the one that's interspersed around the building. That's what agent is showing on the line. The W1, you can see in the upper right-hand corner, you saw the W1. And that's shown on, that corresponds to original marks on the site plan. And then the other one is W2.
Okay. Any further questions? No. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present? Uh, this is a uh public hearing. Is there anyone present in the room or online? Raise your hand online if you care to make a comment in favor of or in opposition to this application. Anyone here, there? No one.
We're having an issue with Zoom.
I can still see a hand.
So no one's raising their hand?
Hmm, no.
No.
No one appearing, no. And uh, we'll make a motion to let's see, do we, we have everything we need.
Running, so.
I'll make I'll make a motion to oppose the public hearing for Cantina Beach application for special exception for restaurant use one hundred eight indoor seats and twenty-two outdoor seats at fifteen ninety-six Boston Post River Sisters, map twenty-six lot twenty-four in the B four district and pedestrian.
Second.
Second to the motion to approve, Jerry Lewis seconded the motion to approve any discussion on the motion. With regard to the additional outdoor seating, the commission feels comfortable with uh approving the added seats beyond the um twenty-two that would otherwise have been allowed. There was ten previously allowed and they want to.
I'm sorry, add twelve or twelve.
Right, ten, ten, ten allowed according to the outdoor seating practice, less additional. Yes, the commission feels that that's acceptable and has been shown on the plans to accommodate the the seating and the um the parking is what it is, meets the requirements, and so if there's more cars than that, they'll have to, they'll have to park.
We didn't take a vote on closing the public hearing.
Yeah, we're close public hearing first.
Yeah, well, this was discussion, or okay, on the public hearing, we're just getting things into the public hearing while it's still open. Okay, all right, and motion as made and seconded, all those in favor of the motion to close public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now, with regard to, do we wish to deliberate on this application this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
We're prepared to do so. Great. All right, so with the A or B recommendations addressed by the applicant with regard to walkway from sidewalk to building and screening of the mechanicals. And we have a note, a lighting, light pole in the parking area will not exceed fourteen feet in height from finished grade with a flat base at grade. And we have the hours of operation as a one hundred and eight-seat indoor seating restaurant. And the one concern would be uh the music and the noise that might come from the music, especially on the Thursday night live DJ amplified music has been different from the acoustic music on the other nights.
Saturday, Saturday night.
Saturday night. On on Saturday, you're right, Saturday night, as opposed to acoustic on the other nights. Then we uh we say the reinforce that it's inside only, there will be no outdoor speakers.
Yeah.
And it's in the um B four district, which what's a residency aid district. And so we must be sensitive to the residential property next door. Anything else to consider?
I don't think so.
We're okay.
That's good. You mentioned the architectural review board recommendations, right? Yeah.
Right. That's it, all right. I'll make a motion to approve the application for Cantina Beach for special exception for restaurant use for one hundred and eight indoor seats and twenty-two outdoor seats at fifteen ninety-six Boston Post Road Sessors Map twenty-six lot twenty-four in the B four district and pedestrian with the condition that the A or B recommendations are followed. Lighting will be not more than fourteen feet high. And no outdoor speakers for the amplified for 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 any music.
Any music at all, right, okay, I'll second it.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion on the motion? All of them favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously five zero zero, and you have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Say hey everybody. And so the world, we have a little stupid. They can't. Now, if they don't find something, they might feel. And next on the agenda is, I mean, public hearings B, Old Glory, application for special exception and postal site plan review to construct a one thousand fifty-five square foot addition and one hundred forty-eight square foot enclosed entry to existing three thousand two hundred eighty square foot retail store and demolished the second building at eighteen zero four Boston Post Road, the Sessors Map seventeen lot four in the gateway business B four district and postal area management zone. Uh applicant is Glenn Morelli, agent is attorney David Van Moisten. This opens the public hearing, Mr. Lewis.
Good evening, uh David Van Moisten, attorney for the owner and applicant Glenn Morelli, who has been operating the Old Glory retail establishment at uh its location for some time. The uh building itself originally was built um these four, the nineteen several iteration of the of the regulations. So a lot of the requirements which are in our our current regulations cannot outflow that time. And in fact, the building had, and there's some uh um before the front of corner on the west side of the building, that was a uh uh pizza restaurant. And this was essentially a uh three separate um and your traditional or street mall rental and stay. Um, then in uh about nineteen eighty so when our current regulations were in effect, um the uh there was a special exception sought to eliminate the restaurant and basically to convert the uh building to the current retail um uh establishment, the old glory um as um it is now, has been at operation um uh for quite some time. Glenn Morelli, uh who's here um was uh basically has been operating uh that since uh uh he got out of high school and uh.
Eighteen.
Around that, maybe you'll, you'll get it today, um but um he has been operating instead of family, this is. Uh he has been the principal operator um for this particular plan. Having um given you that um information um uh the attached to the statement of use um a section of a map which uh showed the approved parking packet that uh uh that that time. And uh what we have done with um uh virtually uh I believe all non-conformities uh have reduced them. Uh non-conforming with uh uh as to uh location of parking spaces, numbers, setbacks, filming setbacks, things of of that sort. Having um said that, um I want to note uh that uh we recently received uh a review uh under the ordinance seventy-one procedures from uh Jeff Jacobson. And um if I think the ordinance seventy-one um uh decisions made on that, uh since it's late and that is the process, so I don't think uh that uh uh we just got the letter from from Jeff, and I don't think it's as much of his uh fault as much as the timing of uh of the application when he got that point number one. Point number two, which is probably more important, is that um uh Jeff uh did not get a uh copy of the uh revised uh cycling. So his uh letter that Jeff, I mean, you are just retrieved also um uh is a review which is not going to define um is having access to the amended cycle. Um, that uh was uh my fault uh in that when I filed the uh uh from the public plan um and why he would be uh providing a uh a copy of it, so I didn't uh send it uh send it to him. So um he was unaware that we had filed the amended site plan that covered a a lot of the uh uh items that he had brought up. Um, just as an example, it isn't the only one, but as an example, he said, well, you don't have the uh the cycle. Um, actually, uh because of the uh uh having a preliminary preliminary review, uh which was past uh um chief pointed out that um we would need it. Uh, we would need a case of the uh the sidewalk. Um, there's a lot of issues regarding the sidewalk plan showing it on the north side, but in fact um sidewalks have been built on the south side of the Boston Post Road. Um, so this is, this is fine. We uh so this plan um shows the sidewalk. Uh, we reviewed uh the plan that did. He also had um some sketches concerning landscaping and uh uh putting in a handicap space which similarly we had done on the uh this amended uh site plan. So um I would uh like to just go through the plan as it has been amended, because our client specifically adjusts all uh of just comments. Um, then continue uh the hearings so that we can uh go over the plan again, the conditional matters which require clarification, we'd like to be able to. One of the most important matters is uh uh what uh is covered in this letter by saying that um we are um uh although the the building is outside the uh they're above, they're above or elevated, are above the um end foot. Um, uh, what the uh regulations require actually two feet. Uh, and we have basically the first finished earth floor elevation is eleven point six, so it's a little less than six inches um uh below the flood ordinance uh requirement. Uh, he's indicated in his letter, there's uh about four or five different things that we can uh do to resolve that, uh and those are uh basically under discussion uh with him now. So we understand right at this point um uh that we would need a a flood permit, that's a separate application. But obviously, uh we would like to be able to assure you that we do have the uh the flood um permit uh before you finally act on on this application, uh to the extent that we're able to do stuff. Um. The um, one other item that um um just want to bring to your attention is that um the 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 property uh originally uh was a um at a hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage and there was a little uh strip in between. Uh, so if you kind of look carefully at the that section of nineteen uh nineteen seventy map, uh it shows the boundary line closer in. Um, this this property uh has now been uh titled to that, it is vested in uh in Glenn Morelli, so the frontage of the property uh on Boston Post Road now, which is shown as a hundred and seventy feet. And the property does uh abut um Thompson Lane, which is a private driveway. And uh all of the uh uh the existing uh or by the rope on that uh on that side uh is on the uh the property of the applicant. And as is shown on this plan, that they tend to um uh put landscaping to the rear and to um um basically uh buffer the residential building which is immediately to the rear. There's actually two of them, one further to the rear, which doesn't show on the map. Uh, interesting enough, those two uh dwellings. This one here, its address is two Thompson Road. That's because its legal access is not uh Thompson Lane or not through uh this property, but it's actually coming all the way around uh Thompson Road, which comes and then is parallels the Boston Post Road uh and then comes up that adjacent right away um which is shown over here uh and has its access uh basically uh that way. Um, the uh other kind of significant aspects of the uh uh of the of the property and how it's situated that um basically um because of the increased boundary line, we are able to obtain an additional uh parking space of of both the property to the uh to the rear. Um. And um I think that covers what I would like to talk about. Uh Joe Bren is here and uh and also Hope Proctor, who's the uh architect. And the the Joe can just go over to the uh site plan, which also uh has, the new one has a uh basically the uh design uh sheet attached to it. So if there's any questions about the the enclosure. the enclosure, closure and the stop sign of those things along the uh of the sheet attached to the uh to the amended uh plan. So um it's a lot to to take in, but essentially uh we are prepared to address all the comments and um uh in um uh just so a letter and would like to have the culture and continue to to your next meeting in order that we have not be too soon. Uh, I'll turn it over to Joe if now Larry, you have any questions of me as the acting as to that. No?
Hmm. Thank you again for the record, Joe Ren, professional engineer uh representing the applicant with us. I think Dave did a good job of going through everything. Just a couple of points that uh I would like to to make. I didn't really hear Dave mention the second building on site. So if you're facing in from the street, the left-hand building, that building is being demolished and removed. And then there's an addition on the inside, or as you're facing building the left side of the building, you can see the darker gray hash there. And then there's another small addition, just to make the three pieces symmetrical with a focal center points um at that location and um.
Joe, can I interrupt you for one minute? We're having a Zoom issue. We have people in the public. So we need to just pause and there for like a minute. And then he's just Larry, our IT guy is going to reconnect Zoom.
Okay.
Just so if there's anybody who wants to speak, so just be just give us one minute.
Yeah.
Oh.
Get the backups and I see.
Amazingly, somebody knows what they're doing.
It's so simple, right?
Problem solved. Our participants are back. The public's back. Yes, thank you for doing that.
That was very good. Um, no need to restart.
You can continue. We just stopped and
Yeah.
reset.
All right. Uh, hey, so we're discussing these two additions here and um plans are much prettier showing that her color renderings rather than uh the site plan. So I'll leave any of those details uh to her to show. As far as uh the site, there's no, there's very little landscaping in the front. There are some across here that we're extending across the front. On the right-hand side, there there is an existing rope or providing those are enumerated on the plan. And then we're actually continuing those everybody's all the way across the back um for uh the perimeter buffer that you have. Um, there is a residential zone line uh also that runs across the south edge of uh Route One here. You can see the residence zone to the north and then the gateway business zone up to the south. And then also down in the um what would be the south corner, southwest corner, there's another uh residential zone boundary there too. Uh, as we show with that dark gray dash line. So that those are the right are continued all the way across there. Uh, we're buffering since there's really not much buffering there now. Uh, there is an easement here as shown on the survey and the site plan and and um the easement is in favor of the applicant on that property. So those are provided in that area within in easement along the property line. Uh, Dave had mentioned the trash enclosure. Uh, so there is a fenced in enclosure just for three rollaway barrels at this location. No uh no dumpsters, three rollaway barrels there. And then we also have landing that any uh any proposed doorway. Um, Dave went through the parking uh with you. We've enumerated that and based on the old approvals and what's existing there, they try to standardize that as much as possible with the wheel stops and the uh southwest corner, there are six spaces there, wheel stops to delineate those. And then in the front standardized eighteen foot by nine foot parking spaces with the handicap aisle uh front and center to the main entrance, ease of access. And then there is a a loop aisle that comes all the way through the access is parking and then all the way back on eastern side to exit the site. Uh, at this location, there is a stop bar and stop sign with a few more um hydrants added in that corner, actually in the um in the D O D right way, but next to the stop sign, just to add a little bit of interest around. See, we got that front corner as well. Um, so with that, unless there's a specific questions related to the state, I'll have hope show you the the building, which is which is prettier than the black one in the site plan. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm thinking.
Rick.
Hi, I am Hope Proctor, the architect and I'm the project. Um, as they mentioned before, we're tearing down the um building to the east. And we're adding a addition, lots of the sides connected. I'll show you. I'll start with the plan. Assuming we've seen um open floor plan for the store, we're just expanding it over to the east. Um, because we're in a flood zone, we're actually going to raise the addition of six inches. So we're um where we need to be for flood zone. It's uh will ramp up once we get into the store. Um, and we're also adding a small hundred and forty-eight square foot vestibule entry to the front on the uh street side. And the addition is just storefront. There's nothing else. There's no bathrooms or anything, just the additional um floor space versus retail. Um, what we're doing is we're trying to maintain the existing roof structure where we can. So this portion here is existing roof. Um, and this is an existing um element as well here, this this whole gable. And we're mirroring that at the addition here and we're enlarging this with that one hundred and forty-eight square foot vestibule. And we're just raising that roof and really making that piece more prominent. Uh, we're adding some wood, timber features, black window frames and uh white cardboard siding. So to just dress up that whole front and and get a bit warmer. And transwell, having a very large, um it's twenty-eight square foot diameter um sign, it's illuminated. It's a pretty dark logo, but um it's illuminated from the interior of the plan. And then they'll be at the second sign on the east elevation here, with much smaller, just a board sign with a goose neck light over it. Any lighting we're adding um will be, you know, that's scattered compliant. It's all facing down except for the illuminated sign. But again, that's a black logo, so that sign isn't going to be very bright. And nothing will escape the site as far as lighting. Any questions or? Let me bring Dave back in.
I have a question regarding some of the uh square footage numbers and on the uh zoning data table. Max with the maximum, let's start with the maximum road board area. It says the existing building is four thousand nine hundred thirty square feet. And yet in the um uh in the footprint of the building on the plan, the existing building is three thousand three hundred one square feet. Can you explain the difference?
Well, we have our plan. Yes. I think I know who's coming to three thousand three, that one, three thousand three hundred, you said?
Pardon?
Yeah, that's that part and plus the addition is another thousand.
All right. So that that part is listed as one thousand fifty-five square feet.
Yeah.
Or so one thousand fifty-five plus thirty-three oh one.
Yep.
It's supposed to be you know, thirty-six, twenty-six, all right.
You okay? I know we're
Those are now.
Well, then we have the the second floor, the second floor as well. There's the second floor.
They're in the same thing. And actually, it's technically correct because uh they're putting building structure uh you've got uh to the drip line, what have you, as opposed to the gross floor area.
Um.
And that's where
Coverage goes to.
I think Joe can explain the issues.
Coverage goes the overhead, but since floor area doesn't go all that way out, that far out.
Gross floor area is measured to the exterior wall.
Correct.
And it captures everything inside the building except for there's a list of things, but I don't see any of those on the floor plan that would be subtracted from the gross floor area.
Well, stairwell is subtracted.
Right. Are there stairwells in the interior?
Yeah.
And so where where's the floor? I don't have a floor plan for the second floor, you know? On the material that I got, I didn't get a second. Anybody get a second?
No, we all got the second.
No, no, we don't. We don't seem to have that. That's part of the application material.
Okay. And then it's the second floor.
Well, that 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 explains why the numbers don't have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wasn't given that information.
I'm sorry.
All right, then.
Yeah, that's all existing on the second floor. It's just not much happened in that plan.
Okay, that's that's on the growth.
I'm sorry about that.
The gross area interior of the building. Then we, I look at this and I uh I'm reminded of you, you have one.
Right. That's that'll be other.
Um. I have a cut sheet for first part and you all right? Yeah. Your elevation. Is it in the past more?
This one?
Data June seventh. Okay, there it is. All right. Story, fourth game plan. Is that, is there a, is that second story existing today?
No, we're not adding any more additional.
The new addition doesn't have a second floor.
No.
Yeah, it's only old, pretty old. And so the it is the okay. Second story is just the one thousand four hundred twenty. One thousand four hundred twenty.
Yeah.
One thousand one hundred twenty, uh thirty-three oh one. One thousand seven hundred twenty-one started. One thousand four hundred twenty square feet on the second floor. You mean, and does that include the stairwell? It's normal, right? So if I add the one thousand four hundred twenty with the first floor thirty-three oh one forty-seven. Like I'm just trying to make the numbers, but defense system.
Yeah.
Four and thirty-three oh one and one thousand four hundred twenty is four thousand seven hundred.
Twenty-one, right.
Forty-sixty. And then you have to add proposed addition.
Say fifty-seven, seventy-seven.
And where do I find the sum of all those together in the zoning data table?
The um that's in good Florida area. In there. It's quickly, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, um Joe Ren for the record, there is a line four up from the bottom on the zoning data table that lists the total proposed gross area is five thousand six hundred fifty-six.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Over here. All right, there it is.
Now, that makes into account the demolition plus the new lake. Subtract the forty-seven, twenty-one and that to get the
but you using using those numbers, the parking spaces required on the zoning data table. One space for every one hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Of course, yeah, okay.
Use, right? And so if the second floor is stored, there's no breakout for the use of storage and one space for much more generous than one space for every one hundred and seventy-five square feet. Is the second floor storage area part of the parking calculation?
I think they um according to uh Jeff Jacobson, his review, he said uh uh there was something like thirty-two spaces. I'm not sure how he did, but we understood that it was going to be, if you vote the nine seventy-five, the uh the retail testing there plus uh for the existing plus the addition. Um, and then you put one for help when you're done. The storage, you're going to be more than the uh sixteen spaces that were approved, I think he made. So I can go back and uh we'll have an opportunity to redo that calculation, I think, to make sure.
Yeah. That's a
All right, yeah. Um, on page two, Mr. Jacobson's letter. Uh, dated May first, um A defines that based on current parking requirement for retail use, one parking space for each hundred and seventy-five square feet would require thirty-three parking spaces to be provided for the proposed five thousand six hundred and fifty-six square foot of gross floor area, which is not physically possible to provide on this site.
Correct.
And now we get to, Mr. Jacobson had some other points there about previously, previously existing non-conforming and let me ask the zoning enforcement officer and rule of current regulations regarding three years of non-conformity, even if there's no documentation from the nineteen eighties demonstrating a previous approval. We know that these conditions have existed for longer than three years, or these then previously existing non-conforming, no matter what.
They're pre-existing non-conforming, but they're adding and changing and adding on to the building, which gives an opportunity for more conformity. But in a circumstance where you have thirty-three parking spaces required.
Right, so that
Even with the existing buildings there, there's no way that that could happen, right? So I think what the applicant is trying to do is add that additional space to reduce from the the sixteen.
Right. And that then, that then brings up non-conformity improvements. Section ten point seven point one enlargement. No non-conforming building, other structure or improvement will be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered unless the enlargement or extension is conforming. Now, in light of the effort to reduce non-conformities, the square footage of the two buildings summed together should not be greater than the existing non-conforming, right?
The two buildings.
And in order for it to be more conforming with regard to other regulations, especially building setback, Mr. Jacobson correctly pointed out that the proposed addition of one thousand fifty-five square feet may be less non-conforming, but there are are parts of it which are increased, they 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 retain non-conformity where they don't have to. I guess that's what I'm saying. If you were to move the square footage of the existing building that is supposed to be removed and relocate that adjacent to the existing building number one without increasing its square footage. There appears to be the potential to locate it in such a way that. Nonconformities are reduced to a greater extent than is proposed. And the center part of the. Area. Where the porch is proposed to be removed. The proposed addition. Does not increase any nonconformity existing. Between the existing building number one and the street. But it adds to the square footage of the building, which is nonconforming. With regard to the building setback from the street line. And so that's an expansion of a nonconformity into an area which had no previous nonconformity.
So it looks like they're, what they're doing, or they're attempting to do is go through, they're still going to have, they're be under the coverage. They're just reducing the area within the setback. That's nonconforming, that total area by taking parts of the porch out.
Right, but there's.
I think it depends on how you look at it.
It's fortunate, there. One of the things is that if the overall effect. Is a total reduction of nonconformities, that even though one may be increased.
So you get to shuffle the nonconformities around on the property as long as there's no increase in nonconformities?
Long as there is a total. Reduction. In the non, in the nonconformity.
Well. I, I can understand that argument with regard to the proposed addition of building number, replacing building number two, since. The proposed new construction overlaps considerably with the existing footprint of building number two. But to expand building number one with a one hundred forty eight square foot addition. Towards the street is a new nonconformity. That, that nonconformity does not exist today. And that nonconformity is not related to the. Building number two addition on the side of building number one.
But again. It is, that, that new porch does not extend beyond the existing.
It does not extend beyond the existing nonconformity, but the whole front of the building. Scale ten. From the street line. It's supposed to be. What's a setback?
I think it's fifty.
Can it be for district from the street line?
Yep. Fifty front yard.
Fifty.
Can see it running right through the middle.
Right, yeah. And so the existing building is nonconforming. To add to the existing building in the direction of the street increases the nonconformity of the existing building. Even if you shuffle the nonconformities regarding an expanded building number two, like abruptly twenty one square feet elsewhere. This one hundred and forty eight square feet is an expansion of a nonconformity. With regard to the street line setback.
It is. It is not because it does not increase. The nonconformity.
Well, let's look at it this way.
Setback.
If we added up all the nonconformity square footage of the existing two buildings today. And the proposed addition. After removal of building number two. That reduces the street. Building setback, street line building setback. And so all of that area of the proposed addition. Of one thousand fifty five square feet. With regard to this street line setback, nonconformity is a reduction in the nonconformity. But the one hundred and forty eight square foot porch on the front of building number one is an increase in the street line setback.
But this already.
Do you have a photo of him?
It's no worse than before, but the area of the square footage. Between the building and the street in terms of gross floor area and building street. Street, building, street line, front setback. This one hundred and forty eight square foot porch is an increase in the. Building setback nonconformity. It is not related by structural connection to the rest of the building. Addition. It is a structural increase in the nonconformity with regard to the street line setback.
If you take. Street setback. Do not consider the totality. That you take each one individually. What I'm saying is a, the concept of reduction in nonconformity.
In a general sense, we have a calculation which supports that contention. But the regulations. Tell me that we have a street line setback that's already nonconforming. And what you're doing is building towards the street, a one hundred and forty eight square foot porch. Which makes the street line setback a regulation for that part of the building, which is now more nonconforming than it was before.
Can I have a question?
The other building two replacement addition proposed, one thousand. Fifty five square feet.
Okay.
Is reduced.
Yeah, Chris has a question. I have a question or clarification. Okay, so for the existing building. Right now. The entire, the porch sticks six feet out. And runs the length of the building. So I think. The applicant is proposing to remove. The two sections. But where it says addition, there is a hundred and forty eight square feet there already. So they're reconfiguring that one hundred and forty eight square feet and giving up the two other porches.
Here's the one hundred and forty eight square foot proposed porch entirely within the footprint of the existing porch, which is to be torn down.
Yes.
Yes. It doesn't look like that on this plan. The line for the existing porch. Is farther from the street than the dark line of the new proposed one hundred and forty eight square foot. Addition.
I think what this is showing has been curved.
The existing porch is measured from the drip line.
Yeah, I don't know if this is showing the.
And so the drip line of the existing porch is farther from the street. Than the structure proposed, one hundred and forty eight square feet.
It was our intention that it complied and.
It's gonna be.
Check that.
Yeah.
We're into that.
Yeah, if I may, there is a six foot dimension on her. As Chris, I just mentioned, the porch is six feet, including its overhang. So the intent was that it matches that porch, it doesn't get any closer. Another point I'd like to make is on the west corner of the building. That's where it's closest to the street right now, it's twenty eight point two. And the closest that new addition gets to the front is twenty nine point one. So it is ten inches further back than the closest point of that part of the building. Than the existing building is today at that northwest corner.
And if you look at A one point O, the floor, the floor plan, you'll see that. The new vestal deal lines up with that six foot overhang.
I think the thickness of the lines.
That also surveyors usually locate, but it's on the ground.
I understand where we're coming from, but my point is that there should not be any part of an existing building. Which is extended into the area, which is the violation of the street setback.
Unless.
No, 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 you can read, there's other space on the property where square footage can be added. Without increasing a violation of the fifty, fifty foot front setback. There's an area. On the southwest corner of building number one, which is not in any setback, and that's not used. It's all used in the front, in the street line setback, the new construction is closer to the road than the existing building. The proposed addition, where building two is to be removed, is no closer to the road in, in any part than the building to remove. Between the street and the building. Well, there's a little corner there on the, on the part that just closes to the street, but. Building two has been removed. And reducing street line setback nonconformity. Building one is being expanded, increase in street line setback nonconformity.
It's actually being like reduced, we're taking this, this section out, this is already all until.
Well, only if.
And we're just taking out like two sections, if you can look at it that way.
Okay.
Versus adding on.
Right, if you can demonstrate that these, these two lines.
Yeah, so.
That you're not getting closer to the street than the existing drip line from the existing front porch.
Understood.
Yeah.
That would be the limit that I say should be observed to become not more nonconforming.
Understood, and we will comply. Does that show on your section? So we'll show the drip line.
Removing, you're removing the full porch in the front. You're, you're, you're adding this.
In the same.
In the same. Footprint that is there now.
Correct.
Because this is integral to the design of a building. But it works within the boundaries that are currently there.
That is correct. And I think we would need clarification on.
We will correct. Anything on the plan that shows to the contrary. It doesn't show the drip line. And it shows the dark line.
Shows that there's no increase in. We'll make sure it does.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
With regards to the sign detail that we got, which shows L E Bs in various. Lines behind, behind some. Design feature.
Yeah.
Trail sticker. It's important to note that regulations actually prohibit flashing signs, which would include any sign that varies in intensity. So there would be no on or off and no racing of lights on these L E B strip.
None.
Right, just checking. If you go to. The square, the square footage. I'd like to see a clarification of how the square footage numbers add up. Alright, then Mr. Jacobson's letter today that I assume you received today. So. Please respond to his comments, if you will, in materials through the commission.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to ask a question because I think it's going to help the applicant. So we have the sidewalk out in the front, which is going to be landscaping. And due to the shape of the lot. And the tightness of the lot, I, I think the commission kind of has to make a decision to keep the walkway or toward the landscaping. So. I, I'm just trying to provide guidance, if you're making revisions, this probably is the time.
Okay. If I can clarify that, where the sidewalk has to go, if it's required, is in an area where we're already held by. The wall of the building, we can't, we can't put parking past the wall of the building, so it has to be in front of the building. There's about a five, four to five foot width of landscaping that's there now that we were maintaining and actually extending. Once we put the parking, the eighteen foot long parking spaces up against that, it only leaves maybe about another ten feet before you get to the sidewalk. So it would force people to back up potentially over that flush concrete sidewalk, which there could be pedestrians and bikers and cyclists and so forth. On that sidewalk or near that sidewalk, so that's why Jeff came up with the two sketches, one of whom showed angled parking. With, with a series of ballards, not sure how the ballards would look every four feet across the whole frontage. But also angled parking, you'd probably lose two or three parking spaces across the front as well. So if there was no requirement of the sidewalk, then that whole entire issue would be. He's showing on his second sketch, again, his four we heard, three, three, six, nine, twelve, fifteen, so there would be a row of fifteen yellow ballads down the front. Along the sidewalk. And then angled spaces, there are three. Sixty showing meat spaces, but not one of those is handicapped, so there would only be seven spaces.
Yeah.
Where, right now, we currently have twelve, including a handicap, so we're losing five spaces and not even getting a handicap, so.
That's why I'm bringing it up, just so.
Yeah, no.
Just say now before.
Very good point.
It's, in, in my estimation of this question, that the sidewalk would be more preferable. On the landscape. If you had. If you could even choose.
I agree.
Or if. Sidewalk plan.
Priority two, so what's happening is you build. And put them in that line, okay. Are you still going to lose spaces now?
It's fine, and that gets more, alright, so.
As soon as you angle the spaces, you'll lose several spaces, so it's not waiting, it's better for the sidewalk, but it's not better for the mono parking and the handicaps.
One of the difficulties is that, and I mentioned about the, the sidewalk plan and what it shows and where they've been built. It wouldn't make any difference. To us to put the same length of sidewalk. On the north side. That runs basically from Vista Terrace to the Apple Rehab. So that gives you more room to deal with backing up and the like on, on this side of the road. But the trade off, of course, is that. Actually, it probably would only serve for just the terrace at Apple Rehab.
So, so right now, we have a steep grant, so sidewalks are going to go from. Pretty much from Big Y, wherever it's missing by air, to Westbrook, and on the Westbrook side, all the way through to this.
On the north side.
On the north side, we have a grant for that. So for the most part, the north side of Route One and most areas. It's all, it's all permitted and shovel ready, so that's, that's why we're focusing on now, I guess, what's called priority two on the sidewalk plan, and I understand your point, it's. This is a tough one, because if you were to. Put landscaping in the front, there would be no parking with the arrangement of the current building, I get it. But so those grants are already in place and.
I think one way around this, and this is something I, I, don't know if you recall. That when Max's place was done, there was this question about the state had in its plan. To, at center, at, between Chalker Beach and Center Road to do that, and was simply bonded. That we would have to do that unless it was done by the state. I think you could do that with the steep grant.
We already have the money, it's already.
You got it?
We have, we have the grant, is what I'm saying. Well, no, it's, it's something that the town received a grant, it's a matter of. Getting it bid out and getting it done with the money, so that's.
But that's on.
Right, so what Attorney Marissa was saying was that, instead of putting it on the south, it would go on the north, but we already have the funding and the design for the north side, so. Yeah. We're kind of going to priority two sidewalks, which is the south side.
It also looks like if you remove that landscape strip in front of the building. It's on the order of five hundred square feet of landscaping, it would lose and would put you back to nonconforming in the middle of landscape area. And there would be no breakup, you know, it would be parking right up to the wall of the building. Wouldn't be able.
I like the landscaping though.
Well, we want to, that's our plan, to split the landscaping.
Yeah.
I think it becomes, it becomes. Far more feasible if we don't have to deal with the sidewalk. Because then there are not the. The need for ballers with the.
Well, the pedestrians are going to walk through there anyway, I mean that.
Exactly, they are.
Any questions? I have a question regarding. Steven, you're March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. At the end of the first section, it says, this statement of the normal business hours shall not prevent the establishment from operating during additional hours during prime shopping seasons. At the end of the first section, it says, this statement of the normal business hours shall not prevent the establishment from operating during additional hours during prime shopping seasons. That is not in compliance with the requirements of the statement of use in hours of operation. If you wish to extend hours of operation, then you should say during these months, the hours of operation may be from this hour to this hour. You don't get to say, you get to pick and choose whichever hours you want, whenever you think it's prime shopping. You have to be specific regarding hours on a clock with regard to hours of operation.
I took that from two other statement uses which were approved.
Well, we made a mistake twice, we don't need to make it.
Okay, so one, you guys, I didn't understand. That we.
We asked that either to be removed or be specific with regard to hours and time of view.
That we will do also.
And. Like, it says the site would be accessed by the existing curb cut. Is there something on the plan which shows where the existing curb cut is? According to just one.
Giant curb cut, it is, it shows as, uh, the paved area. Which is.
So the entire paved area is the curb.
Yes.
It always was.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit off the property line on the west side where the mailboxes are, but essentially from there all the way to.
And there's no reduction in that non-conformity. And we have, uh. On the update, it's like the plan dated, it's. So April fifth, yes, we have, uh, the amusement. In favor of, and the, the amusement, it's showing, I'll provide that. Or Mr. Jacobson's suggestion, we have that. I don't have any other questions this evening, but. Anticipate continuing.
Yeah.
You want to open it up to anyone who may be in attendance.
All right, well, yeah, for the sake of the public hearing open this evening, if there are anyone in the room or online. Who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application. Not appearing then, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding Old Glory application for a special exception and local site fund review. And, uh. And, and a cam review. And sixteen, eighteen oh four Boston Post going to our next regularly scheduled meeting of. Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M, down at all first floor conference room three of Main Street, oh two.
Second.
Second advisory, Lewis, saying the question, the motion to continue. Non appearing, although in favor of continuing this to our May fifteenth meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion encouraged unanimously, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, new business. Twenty twenty-three comprehensive update through the Plan of Conservation and Development, a tissue here from the uh, the old city planning commission. Uh, action for our consideration is to review the draft plan and report through the planning commission by June first, twenty twenty-three. Have you had a chance to review the? Products through the plan of conservation and development?
I haven't completed it yet, no.
It's twenty twenty-three and they're updating the previous.
So let me just, I can give you a summary, so the previous.
Updating the previous plan of twenty-ten.
So the planning commission is taking the approach of updating the plan section by section. On the last section, the economic development section, that was adopted in twenty twenty, took two years to revise. And the plan's been in different formats. Um, so the planning commission. Started about a year ago doing kind of a comprehensive revision, um, for a few reasons, so for example. Uh, conservation in open space hadn't been, and water resources were two thousand and three and two thousand and six. Uh, residential development was last updated in two thousand and one. Transportation, two thousand and three. And then there's a number of other plans that were actually made into planned sections, so the two thousand and fourteen Mariners Way Plan, um. Was one of those, as well as scenic roads. Which the scenic roads plan is an important plan. But the discussion is, well, is that, should that be weighed as heavily as a residential development or economic development section? So right now, um. There's several different formats to the plan, everything will be put into this format. Uh, that, as well as the economic development section, which we're going to work on the formatting for that. The planning commission and the land use department hopes to get this adopted by August first. Because this is a year for, uh, Sustainable Connecticut reapplication, so this counts for substantial credits we've. Gone through and spent a lot of time, um, trying to get. Information on the plan, um, we've sent out surveys in both English and Spanish, we've had hard copies distributed. Everywhere from senior housing to soup kitchens, to hotel lobbies, um, to try to get as much input as possible. And, and this is the result. I don't know, that, that's kind of a summary, quick summary of it.
Well, I would say that the format is up to them, that unless you have some pressing need to advise them on format, that. That's, that's not our jurisdiction. If you will, then, uh. Okay. Transportation and infrastructure. Plan includes, is to replace the two thousand and three transportation section. In my, um. My, my recent experience with transit oriented development and the twenty twenty-three version of calling it transit oriented community. Post-COVID with an increase of. Uh, work from home, W F H is the common abbreviation.
Hmm.
That, at, at present, it's a. The approximation is that there's more than thirty percent of people are working from home, and that the businesses are trying to figure out how to get them back into the. But the net result will probably be somewhere in the region of fifteen percent of people, jobs will be work from home jobs. And so the need for transit oriented development is not as great as it was five years ago. The transit oriented development, the objective was to put housing in particular. Close to train stations and bus, bus lines. And if fewer people are, more people are working from home, there's less need for that transit. Old Tbrook is a station on Shoreline East. If you head east from here, the next station is New London. And after that, there's a station in Mystic. And like, that's about it, and the last I heard was that each and every ride on Shoreline East. Is subsidized by the state to the tune of more than fifty dollars per rider. And so the effort to increase. Wow. To increase residential. Dwelling units near train stations is in part an effort to get people to ride trains, to go to work. To reduce the. Then the other thing that's happening in our region is Electric Boat is about to hire more than five thousand new workers at their facilities in Groton and New London. There is rumor that Electric Boat is even getting into the housing market. Because there's not enough for five thousand plus employees to live close to work. Would people live in Old Tbrook and commute to Electric Boat in, let's say, New London for a gamble, because it's a train station. And it's just a little bit outside of a half mile to the Electric Boat building. Near where the little pink house used to be.
Yeah.
But, uh. Yes, so people could ostensibly ride the train commuting to New London from Old Tbrook. Uh, other than that, there is not an increase in the number of jobs in the New Haven direction to increase ridership going that way from Old Tbrook, so. Uh, yes. Terms of infill, Old Tbrook should increase housing density in the Main Street B one district, we already have apartments over commercial. And in the areas. Near the periphery of the shopping center, let's say, Line Street, which we already have three approvals.
Yeah.
And other areas that are. Within a half mile, or tho- those are technically. Half mile and longer walk from the train station via public property. So the property on the north side of the tracks is more than a half mile walk from the train station. I mean, you could throw a pebble from one side from the train station and hit a cemetery on the north side of the tracks, but it's more than half mile if you're going to walk here. And so that's not suitable for what was called transit oriented development. Unless in the plan of conservation and development, the planning commission actually recommends building a walkway, a footbridge over the tracks. Which would change that in terms of walkability to the train station. And so those are the kinds of things I appreciate that they've considered. Overall, the. Transportation and infrastructure, uh, part. Works. And the, the one that is, has the biggest impact, I think, on the zoning commission, is the residential development. Called the twenty twenty-one update. And there's a.
Just, just so you.
It'd be nice to assign responsibilities to other commissions the way they, they get to do it to us, but we end up with a lot of responsibilities. We've already accomplished some of them, and we're on a path to do more. In particular, I think they've. They've hit some good points.
So just to clarify, all the sections will be twenty twenty-three and the update, it's just that was finished in twenty twenty-one, we've been. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll, there was someone had asked that question, but, um, so what we've done is we just kind of finished a section, put the date, that's why with transfer station, it said it, or. About transfer, transportation, it's an insert date. We missed that, but it'll all be the twenty twenty-three version. Okay, so if you have anything kind of line by line or comments, things like that. As you go through, I know it's a lot to get through. But, um. If you could bring it up, that would be terrific. And then we can continue into the next meeting, we do have time. Um.
So.
And just hoping. You can wrap it up with.
I, I have read the. Even in the moment we call it, it's a, the resiliency plan with regard to raising roadways. To get to on Main Street, College Street to Staver Point and their town beach. And I thought I read that the recommendation was that raising roadways was not a good solution, because it would make the driveways from. Residential properties so steep that you couldn't use. You couldn't get up to the road from, from the, from the driveway on the property. And so I think there was a little bit of a disconnect, which is going to encouraging the raising of, of roadways. And there were comments in here somewhere about, um, uh, ra- raising property levels. I think those were the terms that were used, raising property levels is. Um. It's not well defined, does that mean ed fill to the land? Or, or raise the houses? I couldn't tell what they meant by that. I see there's a subtle shift in regard to the planning commission's view of Mariners Way. That there's more emphasis on housing. If, or housing is included in the possibilities from Mariners Way, which. Didn't previously get that kind of attention.
So we previously just, it's just kind of an update in the two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and seventeen Mariners Way plan, there was always some residential component. Um, but. Our economic development director and Carl and I met. And we had some discussions and we actually put a request for proposals out, because I think. Our boards and commissions and overall were coming to a consensus that Mariners Way. Was done before COVID, things have changed significantly since COVID. You know, I mean, you look at it now, people don't go to their office building every day. So, um. We received proposals and are going to investigate a market study just to kind of see some feasibility for Mariners Way. So I think that's kind of a little bit of us is, is trying to, to rethink it and actually see. What's going to work, are, are we going to get a recreational center, are we going to get? An office complex, you know, what's changed?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And any things have changed. Significantly, as we've discussed with drivers, you know, people don't want to sit in a cafe anymore, apparently, they want to sit and idle in their car and zoom and work on their phone. As they're sitting through the dry surf, which is kind of sad, but. It's, it's where we're going. So that, that'll be at some point revisited to, to do with.
Do appreciate that the planning commission encourages us to avoid increasing housing density in flood prone areas. Sense. They got their table of, um, residential districts in Old Tbrook. Yeah. Everything that they have said in the table is accurate, but there are other aspects which are not included. In particular, we, we have a regulation which deserves to be reviewed and possibly changed by the zoning commission. Regarding conversion of dwellings through two dwelling units. And that is allowed technically in all of the residential districts, but there's a. A time point that makes it, let's say, not very popular. We've already done accessory dwelling units. And we've done, yeah, hopped it out in a manner that Old Tbrook and, uh. Handle things, especially with regard to short-term rentals, which is often included in the planning commission's recommendations, that that be something to, uh, address. I think we've, we've done that. Divided the state doesn't change the name again, we'll see.
But, and, and I think that's part of the reason for the comprehensive update, is that. Things have changed a lot since two thousand and one, and, and it's really time to look. At the plan of development cover to cover and make sure all the sections are updated. Um, the commission can always go back and revisit it, just like we do our zoning regulations, um. But there's important things that I think the zoning commission has been working on. And it's been on everybody's mind, just the plan never caught up, so now we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up so that the plan. Is moving forward for the next ten years. And catching up with what the zoning commission and other commissions have been doing ahead of the plan.
Somewhere in this material, it's. Look, it's not, I hope it's not this one. There is a pic, there is a page that has a picture of. Uh. There are two pictures on the page, oh, here it is. Baybrook Junction Innovation Intersection on page twenty-six of the Economic Development. Commission's contribution.
Well, this was the planning commission and economic development.
The Seabrook Junction Innovation Intersection. It's a center point connecting regional innovation districts. And if you look at the, the photo, the big one is the Old Seabrook Station. And the little one is. And pharmacy, and that's, uh, more than, it's about a mile of the station. Is that really in the same? Consideration? It's a beautiful building, but, uh. I don't think of it as part of Seabrook Junction. Should go to the fire station, huh? The fire station is probably that, well, it's. Should go to the fire station, huh? The fire station is probably the lowest. Village concept.
Yeah, I don't know why that photo was picked, I wasn't part of that section, but we can, I mean, this is an opportunity to change any of those photos and maybe it should have something like posted name there. Yeah, versus.
Right.
James's Pharmacy, which is a non-informing residential. Business in a residential, though, probably, that's a very good point.
In general, um I think the planning commission has. Done a pretty good job, they avoided the use of the word character for the most part.
The economic development section, we do have to clean.
Yeah.
Remove the word character, uh but we'll do that when we. Start reforming.
So uh I I don't have. I don't have anything critical to say. Of what I've read so far, other than. Keep going, it's. Where we have to, we have to move, we have to get something accomplished. And uh zoning has in its mind. Besides, I do hope, and I think others here do as well, that we will make progress on the things that are. Um. Our responsibility.
Yes.
Great, anything else, that's it? And C base is not used very often at all. If anything. We have an affordable housing plan. And selectmen have to set up a housing, what's it called? There's an assignment that has not been taken on by the selectmen instead of housing authority, right?
Well, now the Affordable Housing Committee. Which there were some discussions about having maybe the planning commission serve as that is one of their hats versus starting another committee. And the housing authority is a whole other.
Hmm. Well, the housing authority has a job to take on and to do, but in order for things to happen. Zoning commission has to be a part of that. And I would hope that. When the housing authority is populated and gets to work, that zoning has a say.
I'm sure zoning will.
Much as we have an inland wetlands representative, do we get a representative on a housing authority?
I'm sure that zoning will be involved. Kind of hard to talk housing without zoning. Yeah.
All right. Anything else on the P O C D? No, okay. No more rule sex workshop.
So just to, so this is a request for a report.
Oh, yes.
Um. On on the draft plan. So what I did was before we technically advertised the public hearing, I's. Got it to a little bit earlier, so do you want to continue it and continue the discussion? For the next meeting, do you want to?
I would say I I'll I'll pull together a couple of paragraphs of comments about. Their referral to us kind of thing. Makes up. And if everybody else would look through the materials that the have been provided that. We can. Add or modify. A start a draft. Uh, report.
Okay, so for the next meeting, if you have some comments. And then we'll put it together into a draft report for the next meeting, so we'll keep this on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
That's the second meeting, man, they want it by June first.
And when you send it, can you just copy Joanne, because Joanne's gonna end up writing the report in the end, so yeah, maybe just kind of help. Help me track that one. All right, so you're gonna continue it to the next meeting? Of May fifteenth?
Yes. Or some.
Got a motion or?
Motion to continue the workshop. To discuss drive through windows as an accessory use for financial institutions, pharmacy, indoor restaurants, or other food.
No, 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 we're on the plan development.
Oh, that one.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were already done with that, okay, that's too bad, I know, I thought we were going home. Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the twenty twenty three comprehensive update to the plan of conservation and development.
To our next meeting where we will pull together uh input.
Input and our report.
Right.
On May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Twenty twelve, sorry.
Any discussion on the motions? All in favor of the motion to through the P O C D referral report? Next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. New.
So.
Well, from Mr. Royce.
So uh Attorney. I in our last meeting, not to jump to the workshop, but we kind of started the workshop, we're jumping all over the place tonight.
Okay.
Uh, so the workshop tonight was continued for the discussion of drive through windows. And at our last meeting, um the commission said that they would consider written comment. Regarding the proposed drive through text. And then at your next meeting on May fifteenth would. Consider verbal comment, so Attorney Royston on behalf of his clients has provided some written comment for your consideration. Um. Prior, I just received that now, prior to that. Um, from our last meeting, I have anything to do with Joanne, so because those are going to go in the packets. Pull them through and have here tonight. After our last meeting, I went through. The text. That we had discussed and I sent you a markup. There were only a few markups. Which I think I've captured everything, I don't know. What else you would like to add, I also asked Jeff Jacobson if he would take a look at it just to see. From a design perspective, some of the thoughts that he had, especially since he's. Our reviewer on a lot of these. Um, and I have to follow up with Jeff, hopefully by your next meeting. I'll have that. And is there anything that I missed in your previous? First. There were very limited things. I don't know if you need to go through Attorney Royston's comments now, or you wanted to wait till the next meeting, so you have some chance to review it. But referring back to the text that I sent you. I think it was the day after your meeting. Of April. Oh, we are in April, March, March. Our last meeting in March.
March twenty seventh was the special meeting.
Oh, that's right, thank you. Oh, we still have two minutes from now. Okay. Sorry. So is there anything else you want to add to my edits? From your previous workshop at the special meeting?
Your edits, no, I did not.
Having a hard time realizing that it's.
May.
May. I don't know where April went or March.
I know.
January.
Well, you were mixing more.
Well, I'm still.
Yeah, we did.
We should read Royston's comments and see if that fits or not. Yes, I didn't have anything additional to your comments. Right. Once you capture them. Or I remember.
So would it make sense at this point? If there's no edits. To the most recent. Version of ideas to change the drive through regulations. I'll follow up with Jeff and hopefully have comments for you. Beforehand, so you'll have some time to take a look at it.
A moment this.
Is there anything else you want to add or change that we missed? And is there anybody else on the staff level you want to take a look at this? Because if that's where we are, I think it makes sense to. Take some time to read Attorney Royston's comments and then he'll be at your next meeting for some for a verbal. For discussion, I suspect.
I agree. Nobody's close to you. Well, you know, the first thing that strikes me is, the first thing we crossed off was is. The reference to business V four district. This show you.
I haven't had a chance to go through it.
I don't read anything else except the foot, they need to cross that off, so like. That means he wants to acquire this to.
I think what he's saying is a little. Repetitive.
Yeah, that's what I can too.
I don't agree.
Is there a baby?
No. No baby.
Baby yet.
Not yet. And we're also waiting for A R B's report too, for our.
Okay.
What?
I'm doing, Mr. Royston is talking and he and his comments about. Separation distances. I thought he had an objection to separation differences from a constitutional standpoint. Okay.
You you did, so you did receive another petition to amend the zoning regulations. On um.
I like your, I like your draft the way it is. With the work that. Was put into it, yeah.
So I'll wait for A R B. And Jeff comments, try to put that in, I'll go through Attorney Royston, if there's some things that, I I know there was. Some redundancy from the commission, it was very purposeful.
Mm hmm.
In certain circumstances, I'll go through his comments. And then. Continue to the fifteenth, the fifteenth, you've got right now old glory. Plan of conservation, but if you can get comments to me earlier, I can input those together, so that should go quickly. And then maybe we just close that agenda to.
Yep, just uh. That's good.
Yeah.
Right. I gotta keep all this.
So that, just actually one thing, I'm just going to, do you want to send this back to our traffic engineers?
Or?
Oh, you're rolling over here, you're sorry.
Oh.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just looking, there's a number of. Question or. References to traffic engineers. Do we need to send this back to our traffic engineer, I know they did a pretty extensive review in the beginning?
Open base, I think, I think. Once we have all written and verbal communication, we have a plan, then I think we should.
Okay.
Do it then, I think we had earlier as premature.
I I think so too.
I mean, you might as well waste, get everybody's input.
I think so too.
And then, and then put it out there rather than have to maybe do it again.
Yeah. I'm just.
I just gonna flip through on, like I said, I just saw.
Which was a question on that. You don't want to give it to the traffic? No, I do. But I think it's too early to give it to them yet.
Right.
Maybe weeks.
Cause we.
Here, the attorney have provide further comment for our traffic engineer. It's kind of on the information that he got from the D O T, their numbers, you know, so.
Well, no, this is from his client's traffic engineer.
Right, but I mean, where he wants to give the comments. Get comments from their traffic engineers, it's kind of on those numbers. That we got from the D O T, so.
And from our traffic.
That's what their traffic.
Is is ours meaning theirs or is ours meaning ours?
So his, so I'm meaning it, we will provide. For the comment from our traffic engineers, meaning that the. Dave's clients are gonna get a traffic engineer.
Yeah, yeah.
To provide comments on what was put together.
I don't think that's necessary.
Well, that's what he's doing.
I know, but he left. He's asking about the, like, the numbers of spaces we're looking at. And where we came up with those numbers was from D O T. Numbers.
And the traffic.
So they're traffic engineers, so yeah, that's right, so that's probably what should happen here. When we consulted that. The zone, yeah. Whatever, yeah.
So after that, if you want to revisit it with our traffic engine. I'm just kind of flipping through. Yeah, and there's a lot of definitions. And we can go through and obviously read it, but like, so for example, this food and beverage establishment, that's that we've never defined. Word. So that's a proposed new, they don't know.
That's it's uh. Only it's.
No, our regulations, every section where it says restaurant or other food and beverage establishment, now it's proposed to. Define it.
Define what other food and beverage establishment means.
So like here, thirty two. In our group. All right, they get a lot to review.
Yep.
Okay.
Inization of your own.
What's, what's the word?
Control invasion.
I believe that one, we've used it.
Huh?
We've used it, but I've never. Went to Webster and asked the question. Well, we have to revisit this too, because what Dave's saying is that. Your draft allows a drive through in the B two, I thought you eliminated that. So that was intentional, that's where it says in the business before, because that was the only district, that was no long, okay, I'm just. So that was intentional. Doubles the minimum lot size. Reduces the number. And prevents proliferation of drives whose limitation on the number. I thought we still had a plan. What? We're going to do the workshop or what are we doing?
This is the workshop.
I know. So are we finishing it up or what are we doing?
We're on to the next.
So, yeah.
I'm tired. So for the workshop, my follow-up is A R B report, Jeff's comments, and then go through Dave's and see if there's any kind of housekeeping, but
Okay.
for you. Do you want me to market everything? So for example, you still had a comment, the minimum lot size and where it says B four, but you intentionally removed B two. So I can kind of maybe go in and put some comments that was intentional.
Why?
Yeah.
Yeah. Housekeeper.
It would make it easier to understand.
Of a shopping center. He gets to that, Mr. Royce gets to that later in his conference, but we need, we need a definition of what a shopping center. Not just by parking.
Well, that was, I think, a separate project.
Yes.
That's the most recent.
But would that be what you call housekeeping in addition to?
It's in there somewhere. So we didn't add any housekeeping to this text. This was strictly drive-throughs. I have another list of housekeeping.
If this is, I think is ready and it's time to go to public hearing and start the process. That's how I feel. And all of these comments from Mr. Royce would be welcome at the public hearing.
Well, at the last meeting, they said you take public or comment here
Yes.
in written form at any workshop.
Right.
And at the next one, you'd open it for comment. So I think we need to stay consistent with that. And then none of the housekeeping items, shopping center. The other one is there was an issue with non-conformity. So I kind of kept that separate. I didn't get into it for a drive-through workshop. So I can work on that and get that to you too.
All right.
Sounds good.
Good. That's it, right?
Yes.
Continue.
Yeah.
Continue. Get her done.
Staff reports.
Okay, so I sent you some information earlier that can make staff report a little bit easier. I hope you don't mind me doing that. So we have a proposal at forty Research Parkway. The former which right now there was a pathlay, lighting and stark properties, the proposal to purchase that. And there apparently have been some changes in some of the tenants, but under the new ownership, Ironhouse Fitness would occupy six thousand square feet and lease the remaining space to the tenants that are, that are currently in there. If anyone in there does not have zoning compliance, they would make sure that that is proposed. Any thoughts on how you want to handle this? I think it's a site plan modification. Is this something?
Yeah.
I mean, so in two thousand and fifteen was the last review. That went through wetlands. And zoning, do you want to see this again as a formal site plan, but there's not a lot of modifications. It's just what's
There's no building modification, right?
They are going to propose to improve the appearance of the front entryway.
Yeah, they're not changing the footprint or just.
Which they would go to the architecture review board and change that. There's some discussion of some of the sod renovations. But they're not adding space. They're just reusing.
Change in landscaping or parking or.
Other than enhancing.
Yeah. Is there a change in parking or add to the parking or? Was it, was it a special exception approval?
Site plan. Site plan?
Site plan. Then it's just a site plan modification.
So does it need to go to the commission or is this something you can handle it administratively?
I think you could handle it administratively.
And A R B for, yeah, so it's less than forty thousand. It's under forty one point, one point two. So I just wanted to run it by you and we'll go from there.
Yeah, good.
Perfect. Next one is one nineteen Spencer Plain Road. I sent you an email with a link. There are interest in opening an indoor baseball training facility.
Yeah.
So the question is, does this fit within your regulations? Which it could be business or service.
The zone is
B four.
B four.
I believe.
B four.
I think it's B four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't write that.
I think.
We can look it up.
Years make, years make sense in a B four district than.
So this is one-on-one training. There'll be as little as two trainers. I sent a follow-up. And a maximum of thirty people, depending on the team. Many of the plannings have three to six players training at one time. There are thirty spaces surrounding parking.
Are these adults? Or what?
No. College, younger, high school.
Could be younger.
But not younger than.
Yeah, it could be high school.
Okay. Semi and professional baseball players.
Okay.
It's B four. It is B four. Yeah. Yeah. I know it was there for more.
Because of service rendered retail.
This is what I'm asking for, Claire.
Numbers with quota intervention.
No, it's a retail routine for indoor baseball training. So when you're looking to go to major league, follow up.
You don't have to be a member, like, it's not a joining thing.
So retail service? You want to see this as retail service. So it's something administrative.
Administrative.
Okay. Double check. Well, then it's a whole other.
Yeah.
I know. I think that's it unless you have something for me.
I don't.
I try to shoot you emails here and there versus giving you a ninety-day staff report, trying to say this is what's going on. So unless you have something for me.
I don't. Much into a jar, like nine nineteen.
On favor. Aye. Aye. Unanimously, I abstain.